I don't have a gamble. I can call the meeting of the Rochester Common Council for June the 27th to order, and our first order of business, Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilman Thompson, would you lead us in the pledge?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with the voice of standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chase. It's kind of like church, Chase. I feel like it just came on up front. Okay, did everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the meeting of May 23rd? If so, entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Mason, that motion. Chase, those in favor, raise your right hand. It's four, zero. Thank you. And the Board of Public Works, safety meeting minutes, maybe 11, but 25 information only. Receive copies of those. Nothing under communications tonight, so we'll move right along to new business. I see we have lots of visitors here this evening. First on our new business is Optimus Club permit fee waiver requested. How are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Good.
I'm Teresa Hauser, and I'm here tonight, excuse me, to represent the Rochester Optimus Club. I think most of you are familiar already with the Optimus Club. We spend somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 a year of our earnings on programs for youth in Polk County. Some of the things that we have supported in the last year or two are the flagellants for the girls softball at Blackadder, many clubs and many sports at the area schools, reading programs, CASA program. We recently have helped fund a new animal shelter educational center. And the biggest effort we have is our $7,000 in scholarships every year. The way we raise our money is we have cheap pancake breakfasts. We sell food at the fair. Please comes, not next week, but the week after, and order your tenderloin. Our biggest project though is that we raise and we sell 10 acres of pumpkins. I think everyone knows that we use Rob Louth's lot over there on East Ninth Street. He's kind enough to let us squat there. And recently, one of our club members purchased a building. Have you seen that story, the building with the nice porch on it there? Purchased that for us, so we have a place that's dry and safe. And I guess we didn't really realize that we needed permits. I called Casey. Anyway, the setbacks were fine, but we do need permits, and the permits were $55. Frankly, we prefer to spend the $0.55 on youth activities and then permits, so that we're asking for a waiver of fees for the size of the building and if we put a sign on it. So that's what we're requesting.
Any discussion or questions from the council? Want to carry to make a motion? Motion only, waive the fees? Second. Those in favor? Four, four zero.
Thank you very much.
Also, Teresa, for the record, you mentioned the projects that you contributed to. The Optimists were also very generous to give $5,000 to the Ninth and Main Street Park. We want to thank you for that effort too. Thank you. Okay, next, we've got a personal property tax abatement renewal request from American and Soul.
I'm not sure, I don't know that they have a representative or Terry?
Terry.
Did they speak to you?
Okay.
This was one of those, the county had contacted me because they weren't sure if we had received the copy. They had received it. So this is kind of a, they can go ahead and they'll process it on their end. It is just personal property, not real property. And so she sent the documentation over to Angie from the assessor's office. And it is kind of a, we're kind of behind the deadline. But she said they did not see any reason not to go ahead and offer them the tax abatement. She said there was a hiccup with them that she thinks it was because of the taxable year versus into the payable year, and she said they got, a year was off for them. And I think it was just because of the confusion when they, because they'd originally applied for a real estate and personal property, found out they did not qualify for the real estate, and then thought they did for the personal property. So I think it was kind of a hiccup in their system at the assessor's office, but they have since got that straightened out. So this is now moving forward. They'll have, be counted us every year for renewal on that. I did not spend much time looking at the numbers and making sure that they were within compliance, but...
I don't have that copy here, Shawna.
It was a separate email.
What, how do they look for the, thank you, one. How do they look for the employee? A little short. Yeah. Terry, I don't want to put you on the spot. Do you have any information regarding their situation?
Yeah, I know they had...
I guess I am putting you on the spot.
That's fine. I know they had indicated they would have 66 employees. I think the last I talked with David, the plant manager, they were under 40. He did follow up later after I met with him back in probably early May and said that they were hoping to get a piece of business that would take them closer to at least the demand for the 66. And he followed up and said they did get that piece of business, so they would be going into a hiring mode pretty soon, but he didn't indicate what that would be in terms of actual employees. So they are looking to add to the facility and bring in more work, but I can't tell you tonight exactly where they are on that.
Thoughts, gentlemen?
Is this something we could approve and attach a warning for following years if numbers continue to not perform?
Well, this was...
I don't know the answer to that.
This is what, the fourth year into this tax abatement?
No, 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 no.
Third year.
Second, right?
I think that...
It was 2014.
I think 17 payable, 18 would actually be the first year that they would get the deduction.
Right.
Oh.
Because of, and that was part of the, like I said, when they were first at the application, and then the real estate tax abatement operates on a different payable year than personal property, as Angie was explaining. So this, I believe, is actually the first year, or last year would have been the first year.
Our resolution number was 14-2014.
Right. Would have been when they first came to us and we approved it, and that would have been towards the, it would have been, I think it was November or December. It was late in the year.
Late, 14.
Mm-hmm. Personally, I think it's just a little bit too early to get too penal with this. It takes a little bit of time to get things moving, improving.
And it's certainly something that next year, we can certainly have a conversation with them at the beginning of the year regarding this, and just so that way they're not, we're getting the information early enough that you guys could actually have longer conversations than after the fact. Because I believe this is due back by May 15th to the assessor's office and to our office, because you're the designated body. And you're more than welcome, you can give Angie a call. Angie Westone at the assessor's office, she's the one that's handling this particular one, and give her a call when she can give you a little more information on it too.
Marty, I think you can state whatever proviso or warning you want and have it put into the minutes. I don't think what you can do is you can't condition whether the council approves a similar compliance statement in the future on something.
Gotcha.
Because I mean, it could be in theory binding future council members, which you really can't do.
Which, that could be something we could write on, I think, under the other, instead of, because on here, you can either, it's in substantial compliance, is not substantial compliance, or other. And in the other, we could put that it's being approved in compliance, however, concerned with the numbers or the requirement or their specifications, how we want to do that.
Projected specifications, yes. Can we get the files tomorrow?
And I know they're aware of this. I went to see them about nine months ago, and the mayor walked in the door, the first thing they wanted to know of it was to discuss the tax abatement. I said, "No, just really to come in and see what you're all about." They, Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of their work comes from a sister plant. They're doing tier-two work to a sister plant. They're not doing it for customers coming directly to them.
That's right.
So they're kind of restricted on the amount of work for the home office, what they're being sent from sisters.
Verbal integration of the company, yes.
Yeah. Well, if you're aware of the situation, they're aware of the situation. I don't know that we need any caveat on the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the continuance of the abatement.
Do we have a second?
No, second.
Marty's made the motion, and Mason, second it. Those in favor, simply by raising your right hand. And it's four, zero. Okay. We'll turn an eye on that. Here's new business, clerk treasurer waiver for Casey Cole.
I know. She called in a favor. You guys have, there's a map that is laying up there. Casey had texted me earlier, and at the area planning commission meeting last night, they met and they were discussing the flying J, the new truck stop coming in, and some traffic concerns and things like that. So they asked her to bring it in front of the council, a request, and they're also going to do this. Her and I are going to coordinate letters. But essentially, what it boils down to is on your map, their concern is, is the traffic light that's there at the Rochester Crossing and not Walmart does not have a left turn light. And they want, they're concerned about that, especially with the increase in traffic, with truck stop coming in. So they would like for Endot to make that a left turn, an arrow going left, south onto 25 from the east, from the Rochester Crossing Drive. And then they also would like to have a turn, a right turn lane installed going north on 25, they're turning east onto Rochester Crossing Drive. So because again, you're going to have much, we're going to have truck traffic, more truck traffic, large tractor trailers and things like that, so they're trying to, they would prefer not to NP the traffic flow onto 25 headed north at that intersection, especially with the way the offering is, is I mean, it's all right there.
Oh, it's going to be a concern.
Yeah. And so she is asking or requesting a letter of support from the council in regards to send to Endot, trying for them to be proactive with this request, to educate them on what our concerns are. So she was just asking for support from the council on that. And again, she and I will draft the letters so that we're speaking the same language and the same documentation going with it. And then I will also be bringing the same request to the board of works and to the mayor's office. And I think if we can, those three bodies in the mayor's office, the two governing bodies in the mayor's office can send a letter, plus the area planning commission will send one that maybe we can get Endot to come in, take a look at it, and hopefully...
And hopefully, they won't say, "That's a perfect spot for a J turn."
Exactly.
Yes, yes.
Because that's the other letter she's sending. So that was their other concern. And they do intend they will be closing on that property July 10th. And so she said, "Don't be concerned if you start seeing ground movement on July 11th."
They're in a hurry, yeah.
Yeah. The planning commission, you know, was almost tabled this because they wanted, they were concerned about it, and they decided not to, because she said, "I think we need to keep moving forward." They're wanting to get their business rolling here and get moving. They're really itching to get that up and running. So with that, and what I will do is if the council, if it pleases the council, we'll get the draft letter. I will get that email to you guys for thoughts, concerns, approval, and then we can get that sent off. Hopefully, we'll get that off to you before the next council meeting and make sure that you guys are comfortable with all the wording.
We can put that, we can put the formal letter out, we'll talk too, but also open up some discussions by telephone to the different Endot.
And we felt, yeah, and we felt probably starting with your office and that yard, get that conversation rolling.
Go right to the commissioner, get it all rolling there.
Correct.
Because it is going to be a concern.
Very much so. And especially because again, it's the increase with, you think about the tractor trailers, you know, you get two or three of them right there, and you're backed up, waiting on that light. And it's kind of a, that intersection, that light, the way they have it striped now is a little oaky. If I have a better way to put it. Matter of fact, Chief Shotz was in my office when we were talking about it, so he, she, he was hearing her discuss this as well as we were chatting, so he's been brought up to speak on that too.
Any questions or comments? Did Casey say, "Endot, have any concerns there at all?"
We have, they have, nothing has been reached out to them. We're trying to be proactive with Endot and get them rolling on this before the truck stop gets completed. If we can get them involved now, hopefully...
Asking them to open up the discussion.
Yes, yes.
I didn't know if they had any reason to approve or not approve, if they had any leeway that way, I guess.
No, I don't think, they're not aware of it as of yet. This does, but we're starting that awareness.
Okay. Entertain a motion to, while the area planning commissioner, city hall, to move forward with that, to reach out to Endot. A second. There's a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
It's going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and that's a four, zero, also. You know, you're a pretty amiable group tonight. We need to tell the other three of us. Well, be cautious, right? Right? Okay, thank you, Shawna.
You're welcome. Thank you. Casey, thank you.
No one finished old business.
I do have old business, I did miss that on the agenda. The letters for the dedications. I have the map with all the signatures for Rochester Crossing, as well as the utilities. So that has all been completed, it is all done, signed, sealed, literally delivered. So I will put that in the vault. She will get it recorded at the recorder's office, so that it now is in the city's inventory.
Okay, great.
Sorry, thank you.
So let's move on down to the department reports then. We'll start with fire chief Butler.
Good evening. I wish I had a copy of the main report in front of them.
Good evening, Tom.
How's everyone? Good, good. Structure fires, two in the city, one in Rochester Township. Drill fire, one in the city. Vehicle fires, one in the city. Auto fire alarm, one in the city. Rush fire, one in the city. Mutual aids, one to Liberty Township, three to Henry Township, two to Abenadi Township. Calls for smoke, one in the city. Gas leaks, two in the city, one in Rochester Township. Gasoline spills, one in the city. Accidents, three in the city, three in Rochester Township. Drove the ambulance once from the accident scene. Medical assists, 24 in the city, 11 in Rochester Township, two in Richland Township. Drove the ambulance four times. And we had a mock prom accident at the high school in the city, and they did prom parking. Total of 63 runs and one drill. Possible for your information in being stewards of the financial dollar. All the vehicles have been serviced for the year. Pumps will be serviced and tested late summer, early fall. And Tower Six, the aerial, will have its tower inspection and test it this fall, waiting on appointments on all those last tests by the vendors. Ending your questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, Chief Shotz. Evening, Andy.
For the month of May, we had a total of 21 accidents in the city, two of those were personal injury. We issued 119 warnings. Thirty of those were city ordinance warnings, mostly for grass. We looked at the points.
And thank you very much for that, chief. That is a tough thing to go.
It's not my horse, but it needs that.
Thank you very much.
Seventy-eight total offenses, 52 cash reports, 819 calls for service, 35 lockouts, eight towed vehicles, and 21 people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that those people were logged for. Other than that, the board of works didn't hold interviews for police officer applicants last Thursday, and we made a conditional offer to two of those individuals, Kyle Perkins and Matthew McIntyre. Kyle, local, Matthew's from local sport. So I, we've got to get them down to public safer medical, get them, the per testing, psychological and physical testing done. It will probably be August before they see their birthday on the job. I don't know if you guys know that yet. And then I'm putting the finishing touches on this year, at least in the park event. It's going to be July 29th, Saturday, it's the last Saturday until... The movie we're playing this year is Sacred Life Pets. And then the Polk County Animal Center has agreed to do an adoption event also that night for us. So watch the movie about pets and then take one home.
You know, I love that park program.
It's a good time, yeah. It's a good time. It's our third year doing it. Mill Creek Church has agreed to do all the food. They do hot dogs, popcorn, cotton candy, water. They don't charge us anything. They don't charge people anything. I'm trying to make arrangements for a dump tank, maybe three balls for a dollar, and all proceeds go to the animal shelter, something like that, just to, a few more activities for the kids.
Any city council members are welcome.
Absolutely. Or elected officials.
Are we going to have a fire truck out there?
Yeah, a fire truck will be there.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thanks, chief. Wonderful.
That's about all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Thank you, chief. I would like to say that, and again, this is attributable to you, my man. We had 23 applicants for these two police officers' positions, and it was a tough go getting them down to a handful. They were very, very qualified people, the best group we've seen in ages. And the credit to Andy, half a dozen of them or so said that the reason they were applying to the Rochester Police Force, all the good things they were hearing about our...
We party for life, go to...
I think they're credit for that. You strive yourself a good deal, and you got...
We're partying.
You've done well, chief. Really have.
We are in a unique position with the third applicant that didn't get the offer. We've agreed that if there's an opening in the next, well, the next opening, we'll give them a call to these available...
Pretty good area, qualified.
Pretty good applicants.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, did I see Warren? Randy, she said, okay, Randy. Evening, Randy.
At the wastewater, we did our normal, the lab did our normal testing. We also tested at Louth for BOD, phosphorus, ammonium suspended solids. The plant, we mowed, we flushed trickling filter number two. We mowed a house on Indian Avenue that was on the list. Collections, we did our locates, we mowed load stations, we jettled Sunset Drive, Jefferson Street, less than nine. Stormwater, it's done, he's going to initiate hydraulic modeling, and the elevation from geo-technical is done. I've attached a Gantt chart, and the top part of the Gantt chart is for the storm Seventh Street Sewer Project, we had a pre-construction meeting with Commonwealth and Burcott, and I got a call from Jim Burcott last week. They changed start date to January, or July 10th. They had an issue with the pouring crew, but he assured me that the finish date will still be mid-September, just as it was in...
Yeah, that's the important thing, yeah.
Fourth Street, we signed a service agreement with Donahue. They're going to work together, work on putting together our information needed for the crossing grant, and at the bottom of the Gantt chart is the one for the Fourth Street. So they are working on that, and I've talked to Paul Elling at Donahue this morning about survey. So we're going to say, we're going to be starting to get ahead. And then the other, we had a pre-bid meeting for the wastewater treatment plant, phosphorus removal, and super-nate pumping station that we had that day.
Lots of good work going on here, Randy. Nice stuff. Everybody can glean from this. We've got about three major projects going here, about improving our infrastructure, making Rochester a better place. The storm sewer project will kick in about 2019 is what the projected date for breaking ground and making some progress in that area. But again, I want to remind you, the folks that were taking on a project that hasn't had anything done to it since the streets were cobblestone. And then, of course, the Fourth Street project is the industrial street that will be whitened. That kind of ducktails against this project because it's going to get some drainage along with the improving of the street, sidewalk being added and such out there, so that we can continue to promote our industrial park and also improve getting out there to 25. The Fourth Street project is, we had together through the Community Crossroads Grant, we're looking for a million dollars from Endot. And that is a 25% match. Randy has to put together an asset management plan and such, which he's done a awful lot of work on, and we're using Donahue as a consulting agency in regards to that. So we believe we're going to be very successful in obtaining that grant. So thank you for your hard work there, Randy. Anybody got any questions for Randy? Thank you, sir. Derek Holloway with the Water Department, Superintendent Holloway.
Good evening.
Good evening, Derek.
The Rochester Water Department, monthly duties for the May of 2017. Red meters, did orders to repair or replace bad meters. Locates backwash filter beds, shut offs, mowed multiple times. Ran the weed eater uptown at the old water tower site and cleaned up all the trash behind the radio station there. Fixed a damaged outside pit at Riddle School. Weeded fire hydrants, installed posts with cement at 921, around a new fire hydrant that was replaced. Shut off and eliminated the over hit, filled out the gas pumps. Myself, Randy Witt, and Randy Carr attended a meeting in Akron on the 25th. Myself, Randy Nguyen, Randy Carr attended immediate in Akron on the twenty-fifth. Installed new signs at the plant, the garages, chlorine room, wall houses and tower sites. Digs ever performed. We replaced the fire hydrant at 920 Wall Bash Avenue. Callouts, Randy Carr was called out on the sixteenth to thirty-three, twenty-two Barrett Road for a customer not having any water. We determined that the curb stop was not on all the way and it should have been. So that was our mistake on that. And then Randy Nguyen was called out on the fifteenth at eight-twenty-six PM to twelve-twelve Pearl Street for a water leak in the basement. I believe the water was shut off for that until the repairs were made. Other than that, that's all I got.
Any questions for Derek? Thank you, sir. You. Street Superintendent Lenny Conley. And Park Superintendent. What brings you to America's Got Talent?
Out of the street department, we put out dignity tables and barrels for the block party and picked them up. Ran the recycling route. We weeded downtown from ninth to fifth on Main and cleaned up with a sweeper. Patched holes with blacktop. Filled the holes in the alleys with millings. We've been sweeping the streets. Chipped and picked up brush. Picked up bags of dirtways. Loaded out compost. A lot of people's been taking it and it's a good thing, getting ready for the coming fall season.
We are turning this time post over now?
Yeah, we are. Randy can turn it, what, about every week or two, Randy? We do keep it turned.
I mean, but we have some people coming.
Oh, yeah, they've been taking it, yes.
Good, good.
Yeah. And we took the chipper to Fort Wayne. They had a recall on the wiring harness and they put all new wiring harness on it. And while we had it there, we just wanted to add the five-hundred-hour service done because it was pretty expensive getting the tanks and changing filters and all sorts of stuff. So we just had to do that while they had it. And we've been watering flowers and trees downtown. And that's all I have for the street business. But out in the parks, we've been power washing Manito Mountain, getting ready to seal it back up again for winter. And we've had the new guttering installed on all of our pavilions. And we're doing a lot of mowing. We're gonna have some signage together for the first big golf course that we put out there. And that's about it. I'll say it's on the basement.
That's part of the law, please.
I have to say something about Lenny. So I don't know if Lenny even knows this, I'm assuming he does, but two of your gentlemen, Brad and Tom, I was out early on a couple days ago finishing up for the parade and such. They actually redid the stage for the parade on the road.
Yeah, that's been done.
Which was absolutely amazing because I did not even know that was gonna be done. But I drove in at three o'clock on Friday and I saw that and I could have seriously kissed it because last year Terry and I were out there for hours trying to get that thing all swept with the broom and not get splintered.
No, it was a... It was a winter project, it was busy work.
That is cool. You guys did such a great job, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
We deserve it. We're grateful for that.
Thanks, Andy. They, you know, it's a five-man department.
Yes.
A lot of bases get covered that people don't realize. I received, just for the council's information, I received a rather lengthy letter, nice letter, a week ago, no, a week and a half ago, I guess now, from a retired fighter captain from Carmel, Captain Overmeyer, who has purchased John Fry's house over on Twelfth Street, corner Twelfth Street.
Twelfth and Pontiac.
Yeah, Twelfth and Pontiac. And he was out just cleaning up his shreps and stuff and ready to... And he says, here, this crew stopped and a city employee walked up to him and said, you know, we can take these things away for you if you don't. And he was blown away. He said, you think I could get that done in Carmel? There's no way. And he wrote rather a very complimentary letter of Lenny stopped to see him, to welcome him to Rochester unbeknownst to me and his crew. So, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Your ambassadors for Rochester, thank you very much.
We're here for it.
Anybody got anything for Lenny?
Oh, and Mark, we are gonna get your parking blocks over there at the community center. Just swipe that blacktop to cheer out a little bit, Fedco button in and...
Yep, the lunch crate.
We're gonna go with me and the mayor and decide to go with the concrete ones rather than the rubber ones or plastic.
Okay.
More so freestyle.
There will be all, everyone has partying. It's also...
Long ways away.
You'll also have a little blue square on it. We're the same age, right?
Yes.
Last time you look.
Last time.
Yes, we are. Anything else for Lenny? Thanks, Lenny. Appreciate it. Okay, going down to the reports of the committees. Aaron's not here. Fedco, Councilman Goodman.
Fedco Matt, June first. For a checking account balance, nineteen thousand, five oh one ninety-two. Operating reserve balance, seventy-two, five thirty-five, thirty-nine. Current projects, Centennial Park is ongoing. As of June fir-, June first, there was approximately forty-three thousand dollars needed to be raised in donations. Is that still from Terry or have you received more?
We received a thirty-thousand-dollar grant from the community foundation. I just received a five-thousand-dollar donation from Dick Belcher today. So based on the numbers I have right now, we're right at fully funded.
Moving on, the theater, the Rochester Theater Group was applying for a Oprah grant through the community foundation. But the community foundation stipulates that the deeded owner must be the applicant. Fedco is still the owner of the theater, so the group asked Fedco to apply for the grant for them and Fedco agreed, so that is in the works. Fulton County, Eel Township, Cass County, the front, Eel Township and Cass County Loans Corp. applied and were awarded Brownfield Assessment Grant in 2013, spent down in 2016. They applied for another grant, received and received where they were receiving the largest amount, six hundred thousand dollars. The grant has been used to help manipulate trail, top industry, environmental assessments, and it's really good for Phase One, Phase Two studies. We actually were able to take advantage of that thanks to Terry pointing that out to me. It was a huge help. Highway thirty-one, as of the first, they were expecting the draft plan from NDOT either June or July. So, not sure that came in yet or not. Work on the nickel plate trail continues. The agreement is signed, environmental reports are being done and land acquisitions are moving forward. They did however find out that no trees can be removed until after October first because of the Indiana brown bat season. And that is my report.
The Indiana brown bat?
Yes.
The roasting season of the Indiana brown bat.
Roasting season of the Indiana brown bat.
Really hard to evict. They must have great attorneys. Okay, any questions for...
Can I...
Terry, you got something?
Yeah, can I pop in a little bit now on a couple of things?
Sure. Matter of fact, we can jump and let you do the redevelopment mission also.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, the... Thank you, Mason, for having me.
You were too yealed for Florida again, I guess.
The grant that Fedco agreed to apply for was a community foundation grant for twenty thousand dollars for some fundraising activities or to work with a consultant for some fundraising to take care of some architectural review that we're gonna need and then also a website. So that's the one that the Fedco is serving as the applicant for. The Oprah Grant, Brian mentioned, is actually a grant that, and I have Natalie Garrick and Renee Fringer and Emily Gottschalk with me tonight from the theater group, from the theater board. And we want to talk to the city about being an applicant for the Oprah Grant. That if you grab the packet of information I dropped off right before me, you'll see it's the Public Facilities Program Grant opportunity. The only applicants for that grant can be the city, town or the county. The city doesn't have any Oprah grants open right now. We have, as always, it seems, a short timeline to turn this thing around. September first is the application due date. Stephen Ray with the Regional Plan Council is gonna serve as the grant writer and also the grant administrator. Ashada, you're welcome.
Thank you.
If the city agrees to serve as the applicant. What's involved in that is, look through that, there's a half a dozen papers that the mayor has to sign. One of the things we have to do is repeal the previous resolution declaring slum and blight over the downtown, which was required by Oprah a couple of years ago to apply for one of their other grants. But since this grant will go to a spot project, we have to rescind the previous resolution and then come back in with a new resolution that would declare just the project area that we're talking about, the theater project area, as the slum area that we're affecting by this grant. I talked to Andy about that. He'll do his magic on pulling the paperwork together for probably the next council meeting. The match requirement is a minimum of ten percent, so on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, fifty thousand. That's not required from the city. Of course, it looks good if the city's actually putting something toward the project specifically. It would look good if the city's willing to put something toward the project on a sustainability basis. So an agreement to put something in a budget line item for sustainability, five thousand, ten thousand, something a year, starting in two thousand, probably eighteen, maybe even nineteen. That would show the Office of Community and Rural Affairs that there is a sustainability piece, that the city's supporting the project. But I had to run a notice of public hearing this past Saturday in the newspaper. I emailed you guys last week about that. That did run on Saturday. So we do have a public hearing scheduled for this room on July fifth at six PM. And we'll, obviously, that's open to the public. We want public feedback on the city's, hopefully, tonight, willingness to move forward as the applicant. I don't think there'll be, it'll be, give it a work out of my office on it. It'll be a good bit of work by the board on it and it'll be a good bit of work from Stephen Ray on it. But we don't really require any city resources other than what the city might look at in their budget to help fund the project. We're hoping that by September first, we can pull together private donations. Do we have a goal yet, guys? Couple hundred thousand dollars maybe in private donations that we can move forward with the project to be funded. If we're awarded, we'll be awarded in two thousand seventeen. It'll be two thousand eighteen before anything can start. So anything pledged this year won't be spent until eighteen. And then there's also ineligible project expenses that we won't be able to probably get to even until after construction. We overfunded eligible expenses. It's over, so those will probably be needed in two thousand nineteen. What else? Probably did. Anybody needs any clarification? Dr. Hoff did donate the building last June, July, maybe. Renee, you remember? No strings attached to Fedco since we're a five oh one C three. If you get a letter from us that that would help on his taxes, income taxes, we're holding the building. The funds that the board raised and the donations we brought in are taking care of things like just keeping the power on for now. We have really heavy maintenance expenses on it per se as the volunteers go in and do some of the tear out activities that would be required. And I've got some contractors that are looking at things like costs to replace the building and costs to replace the side, work on the marquee out front and so forth. Nobody really sees the work that's going on, but this opportunity came along. At one point in time, it looked like we wouldn't be really looking at this grant this year because we were thinking that there might be a Main Street Revitalization Program Grant, is that right? For some street skate this year. But we decided we can't do that because of the stormwater. So that's been backed off. So that kind of allows the theater project to step up and kind of get in line for this grant availability now, so... Questions?
Yeah, we've had, I know you've had discussions too with the committee about the marquee. Be a real boost to the whole program. Funds could be raised to get that marquee in a workable condition even before anything's done much with the building, start utilizing it to not only dress up downtown, but advertise what's going on with the building and such.
We think the marquee restoration would be one of the eligible expenses under the grant, which means if we're gonna pursue that and use that as an eligible expense, we really are at the mercy of their timeline, which would be probably late spring, early summer of eighteen before we can put these funds toward it. Couple of things on the grant. We, key to our timeline is we have to send, we have to start environmental repeat, which has already started. But the key agency there, the one that is gonna offer most of the tripwires for this project would be the State Historic Preservation Office. So if the city agrees tonight to service the applicant for the grant, I'm going to engage, we're going to engage an architect, Brent Martin out of Warsaw, who's worked with us on the project all along, to put together the report, send that to SHPO, SHPO, so we can get a letter basically acknowledging back to them that our project meets historic preservation guidelines. If we're successful with our first attempt in submitting that to SHPO, then we should be in line, everything else should be in line for the September first application date. If that's returned to us, their turnaround time is thirty days each time. So if we get that information to the State Historic Preservation Office by second week of July, it'll be the second week of August before we get it back. So at that point in time, we may be cleared. If we're not cleared at that point in time, there's a really good shot we don't get it done in time for September first. So in which case, we would just work as the board to be ready for the application in spring, five hundred thousand dollars is all our money on the project as we're looking at a total budget of about one point one for the project that we have in vision. And these guys can speak to the future plan of the project, the project site if they have any questions.
Do you like to hear about this project? Future plans? Who's the speaker for future plan? That's what... Emily, is that you?
Well, the head's turned this way, so...
Step on up your podium if you would.
I don't know if you guys have seen it. I don't know if you have, if you're giving it to me or original ones, the architects rendering, but...
First of all, identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I apologize. I'm like Chuck, I'm chairman of the Times Theater Group.
Thank you.
Yeah, the future of the theater is, as it sits right now, it's a four-hundred seat auditorium theater. Our vision is to have it be a community art center that can facilitate both stage performances, live action performances in the way of music, art, you know, drama, but also have the capacity to have a drop-down screen to show, like, you know, to show movies. We do intend to buy projector. That was one of the reasons why the theater originally closed was not the one upgraded to the technology that the movie houses now are producing. We do have the south side space, which is about two thousand, I think, about two thousand square feet, which is just a general press as well. We see that space as being very multi-use for reception type things, not necessarily wedding, but really gatherings of city events, private events, the capacity to have it be kind of multi-use. We have that six hundred square foot storefront space that can be, we're kind of thinking maybe an ice cream parlor or something that can be used to kind of come into the lobby or out of the lobby. We do plan to look at what it would look like to increase the lobby size just for, you know, we kind of envision... you know, we kind of envision like a community living, places where families can come to watch movies, or adults can come to kind of hang out with their friends. We do, you know, we see it as a real critical piece to downtown and really kind of bringing some businesses back to downtown and kind of keeping, you know, having businesses and trapped employees, say, hey, we have a theater, a place to go watch a movie with your family or a place to go listen to a symphony or what have you. So we think it's going to be about, I think it, the most recent estimate was about $1.3 million that we have seen. That doesn't mean we have to get everything right up, you know, right up front. We were able to get this Oprah Grant and maybe get, our goal would be a 50% match, so about $250,000 in at least commitments from private donations by September 1st. We feel like we'll probably have almost 75% of the funding available to us, and then from then, we can look at kind of closing that gap. But that would allow us to work on the roof, that means replace interiors that are in just a state of disarray, and then we can kind of move to the fine touches as we progress. So I share in your desire to have the outside looking a little bit better. We're exploring another grant that is about $15,000 that can be used on outside facades for historical buildings, so we'd love to be able to, again, should we not meet the September 1st deadline, to be able to potentially parlay those funds, should we receive them to at least get something going, just from, hey, we're still here, this is what we're doing. I welcome any questions or thoughts or items to walk my path.
I compliment you folks on your efforts, and I, for one, speaking as the mayor, Terry and I've had these conversations. We've had a total focus on the Ninth and Main Street project, and now that's going to be off the radar. I think we all ought to be joining arms for the next total focus project on our downtown, because that is our, that's our gateway, that's who we are. I sat down with a couple of Juretis yesterday who were from Valparaiso, Manning's wife and two little children. They just had moved to Valparaiso a year ago from Texas, and they were on a, let's take a look at Indiana trip, and they were here just by chance coming through Rochester and were saying, you know, what a nice, unique rural community this is. One thing they pointed out, though, was, isn't the theater, is that someplace we can see a movie? And I said, no, we're working on that. So, well, they said, yeah, what's a little scarred? Thank goodness they weren't here two years ago to see Ninth and Main. They were going to flirt right after lunch and then over to Schnabel Tears and then out to Green Oak and then on, the next, they were just making a vacation out of it, taking a look at Indiana. We don't know how many people do that, getting our best foot out there for it. I don't know if this fellow may come back and put a business in our community, it's up to time, who knows?
Yeah, so just my geeky history side, so that you all know that the theater was built in 1924, and originally they like bought Bill, and then they kind of, you know, as some of you may know, eventually migrated to a drop-down screen, and then they put the wall up and divided it. And, I mean, to think about something that was built in 1924, I mean, we could be coming, we are coming up on a hundred, you're like a hundred-year-old building, I mean, that is, we learned, we joined the League of Historic American Theaters, and it was a great opportunity to network with other small towns and/or even large theaters that are historic, that are really, you know, a lot of people, what do we have that other theater don't? Well, we have the fact that we have a hundred-year-old building and that we've restored it, and it's really a source of pride, and people want to come, like those, those people want to come to a small town and see something that they can't experience, can't experience that at an AMC theater.
That's unique.
And we really got, what we didn't have maybe in that first year was just the right resources and the connections we needed to really say, you know, thousands of people have done this before, so we don't have to recreate, we have to make it unique to Rochester. So we're obviously very passionate about this project and grateful, Terry, for helping us kind of navigate this, and grateful to you all for consideration of my drop screen, because it would, it would be critical, clearly.
Well, and you realize that Renee's grandmother right there, or she, your great-grandmother, played for silent movies in that theater, played the piano for silent movies.
Yeah.
Lots of history there.
And there's, and if you, again, so sorry, but we had, like, you know, we have a seven-member ward, and we just kind of all went around and said, why are you here? What is the appeal? And every single person was really, they had a memory or they had a connection piece to it, and I would be willing, that should we say that in this meeting tonight, everybody has some sort of memory. For me, I didn't grow up here, but it was the first musical theater my children ever went into, and they thought it was the greatest thing they'd ever seen. So, you know, there's, to be able to do something like that, or remember, it was maybe your first, first date or something like that, to just see it sitting there so vacant, I just think if we could work together, take one small step, it's going to be a couple of years, and it's going to be a lot of money, but maybe, I think it could be kind of a cornerstone, we need, along with the Ninth and Main project, to say, we're worth doing something more.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody questions?
What are you looking for tonight, Terry?
I need the council to suggest an approval for application or to service the applicant for the grant.
I do need to make one comment, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if we apply for this Oprah Grant, we are not eligible to apply for any other, because we only have one Oprah Grant open at a time.
Yeah.
So just, so everybody is aware in all areas that we're looking at.
Right. You're not able to apply for another one until this one gets to the start of construction.
Does that include also the DEG, though? Because that's not.
No, this is CEBG.
CEBG's only.
Federal funds.
Oprah CEBG.
What this really blocks the city from doing is applying for another PFP or Public Facilities Program Grant for seven years. So if you wanted to think about federal funds for some other type of public facility, whether it's Community Resource Center or Fire Station or those kind of things, and that would kick you out of eligibility for seven years, just under Public Facilities Program. Doesn't restrict us on Main Street Revitalization, doesn't restrict us on wastewater, stormwater. What are the other ones?
Those are just CEBG, but like DEG is just Indiana Main Street, yeah, those don't.
That's good to know, but this is before us right now. We, I think we all agree, this is a really important part of the downtown, so I think it's something we need to put, turn our focus to. On our facility situation, thank goodness it's in pretty, pretty good shape, but I don't see the fire station being built for the next seven years.
No, but it's just something that you.
Started, huh?
No, it's just something I want you guys to be aware of, so if anything happens before you begin.
Right.
Under this, under Oprah, there, we can't have more than one being open.
Terry?
Yes.
Do they need to, so we need the slum and blight as well as?
Yeah, we've talked about that. They can't do that tonight, but we only need that by September 1st, so Andy's going to work on the paperwork on that and bring the paperwork, and then they can vote on that at the next meeting, that's plenty of time. Thank you.
Would anyone, I'll make that motion. Who serves that? My second. It's been moved and seconded that we serve as the sponsor of the grant application for this project, the Oprah Grant project. Signify by raising your right hand if you approve, and that's for zero. We're on board.
So the public, thank you very much, guys. I hope you guys want to say thanks, they're all going like this.
Thank you.
So the public hearing will be again here on July 5th at 6:00 PM, so we'll, hopefully we'll have a nice turnout of the public, and we can use that to leverage.
Like to have this.
Well, the.
They can come also, Ashada, we wouldn't.
Sorry, what?
We have to advertise, it's going to be advertised, they can still come, everybody.
The council today could, but we could, if the majority of you will be here to be safe, we could advertise it as a special.
Okay. I cannot be here. I can't be here. Okay. You might as well advertise it, because also, as the board works also, because they probably would like to.
Yeah, good. The other piece of business that I need some council consideration on is I was contacted by a developer who's invested in the Bailey Sharper Building downtown. What he would like to do with it is restore it, seal it up, and then also get five or six apartments on the second floor. But his concern is, he's afraid that he's going to have to tell his future residents that they, there's a city parking lot right behind the medical clinic that has a sign up that says 24-hour parking. So his concern is he can't tell his residents that they can park in a city lot, that they pull in on a Friday night at 5:30, and, you know, they've got to move their car by 5:30 on Saturday morning, so.
How old is that sign, Ashada?
Which sign?
Behind the medical clinic, post clinic, there in the parking lot, it says 24-hour parking only.
I have no idea.
That's got to be eight years, or 12-hour.
Yeah, the paint on it is severely faded.
Yeah.
I don't think it's big, or what, it's still, it's erected. And then also on Main Street, and I talked to Lenny about this, we have the no parking from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM, so where your vehicle will be towed, which the mayor and I talked about this earlier.
That's for street sweeping.
And plowing.
And plowing.
So there are times where that's critical to the vibe, but there are a lot of times where it's not, so. His request was, basically, if he's going to invest money in the property, and it'd be a significant amount of investment to attract residential development downtown, we're going to need to look at a couple of parking situations, one being 12-hour parking in a lot that's not enforced at all.
Does anybody up here see any reason why we can't take that sign down? It's been up since 1960, I would.
It is supported by ordinance.
Yes, it's in an okay ordinance, too.
Because.
So we would have to.
The one at Seventh and Madison is also 12-hour parking, supported by ordinance.
Anybody seem recently could have.
And the other one, I was going to say, the other ordinance support you have is the front of the business parking, that was passed not too long ago to limit parking residential upstairs in front of the businesses on the street, so.
But that's during business hours, right?
I don't remember how it's ordered, I have to pull.
Thought that was during business hours, but.
I know there was some conversation, the council, there was a lot of conversation with the council, but I, I don't, I'm not going to say for sure.
Okay.
We have to pull it and review it.
And I know for myself, and I've had some conversations, I had a conversation with Elizabeth Trautman and her husband, who say goes downtown, and a couple other people of, I mean, my car is either at the Chamber or over on the other side, and I probably should have left my car towed like about a million times, but I don't know where else to park, where I can, I don't, I don't really have an offloading thing to go to put things into my apartment, and then I don't know where I would be, should park, so Brian Fitzwater and I spoke about it, and he just said, you know, do the best you can to honor the request of the parking, but I know myself, I feel comfortable, because Brian Fitzwater gave me that, you know, moving ahead, but I was talking to Elizabeth and her husband, a few other, other folks, and obviously this gentleman, if we do encourage downtown living, which is why I moved to downtown, because I think it's essential for folks our age and, you know, for others, I think the parking situation, it would be helpful for there to be some sort of clarity and forward movement with that, to give some structure as to what, who, and how, so.
Yeah, the potential developer is not looking for designated spaces or anything like that, it's just that if a sign out front that said your car will be towed, and that's enforced, then, okay, if that's what we need, okay, and then the 12-hour parking in the public block, again, very old sign, doesn't seem to be enforced. He said, you know, I just, you know, if I've got a potential tenant, I don't want them to have to park two blocks away, or a half a block, a block away from your area of residence and stuff like that, so.
Gee, when was the last time we issued a parking citation?
We typically don't, we try to resolve it before it gets to that, but conversely to that, I have had businesses complain about people living specifically in the 800 block of Main that are parking and taking up parking spaces where, and, you know, shoppers or customers can't, can't park because people living upstairs are parking there. It's a double-edged sword, and I see both sides, I honestly do, and we don't, we don't, to my own fault, you know, we're not strict on that, because, I mean, we're dealing with people that, number one, live above the businesses, plus customers and the business owners, so, I mean, we want to try to accommodate both parties as best we can.
I think there can be a resolution, I don't know what that looks like, you know.
Figure it out.
Because I think it's essential to have folks live downtown, because those are.
It is, absolutely.
Built-in customers, but then at the same time, the business owners have the right, because they either rent or, you know, have paid for that building to be able to have that, so I don't have a magic solution.
And I think the ordinance does say that residents living above downtown businesses can't park there during business hours, I think from 8:00 to 5:00.
Cannot.
Cannot.
It's actually, Andy, just 7:00 to 8:00.
7:00.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, that's a bigger problem.
Yeah, because that's hard.
And that's not going to encourage people to live downtown.
Yeah, and that's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing, it's a hard situation.
Why don't we table this and we pull those ordinances? Very open for our next council meeting. It sounds like we need some attention, at least on the one.
That's good enough for me to get back to that and say we're making some action.
We're going to make some decisions.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, Terry?
How much time do I have?
Geez. You take it out.
That's all.
It's all good, it's all good, thank you. Okay, and that concludes our committee's report. That's fine, Mason, that's all right. Back to Mason, Mason on the park board.
All right, we met on the 12th at 6:00 PM. Other than what Lenny already went over, and also clearly the disc golf baskets are up, right now you have kind of a spray painted in the grass, the tees and holes, right?
Yep.
So we're going to figure out some sort of signage in the near future on that. Ordered two more cameras, security cameras for the park. That was about it for the rest of Lenny's report. From Laurie Simpson, the pool, this number was pretty impressive to me. The first two weeks they were open, from May 27th to June 11th, they raised $16,290, had over 3,000 swimmers.
Isn't that amazing?
So 3,000 individual customers within a two-week period. That was pretty impressive. They had a bad-made valve, and Mary went out and one of the pumps placed the valve, that company put a loaner motor on the pump, so they're going to try to repair that motor and hopefully have to buy a new one. That was in from the pool.
And the diving board.
Oh, yeah, and right before our budget meeting, the diving board was broken, so they ordered a new diving board this past week.
Did we get that 111 out of there?
Yeah.
They had it roped off, and they were going to, I suppose they could get in the bodies, lures and have them.
Yeah, we disposed of it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, then, from Lyle, at the golf course, our year-to-date total revenue is $128,540. That's up from the past three years, it's a little below 2013, and it's about $20,000 under 2012. So we're trending in the right direction, but we're still a little ways behind 12 and Notable events coming up, we have the Fulton County Animal Shelter Tournament on July 8th, Saturday. Do you know what time that is?
No, I can't tell you.
Okay. All right, and that is it.
Park report. Okay, any questions for Mason? Thank you. Councilman Smith of DCA and the Council on Aging.
I'll do Council on Aging first, met yesterday. Unfortunately, I could not be at the meeting, but it was a very short one. Anyway, Rusty was not there from Transpho, and the RSB report was basically about the trips coming up that are planned to Ship Shawana and to, I've lost the place out, out east on the shore, not the Jersey Shore.
Was that? Yeah. It wasn't at like I said, was it?
No, but anyway, then on the, on the Council of Aging side, basically, the conversation was all about the parking area and how much an improvement to the facility that is, and a big thank you to everybody for that. And then a report on the golf outing, which was very successful, netting somewhere around very successful, netting somewhere around $7,000, give or take a couple of hundred bucks, but, so a very successful golf outing, 17 teams and a lot of other donations. On the zoning, that meeting is tomorrow evening, they again have a very interesting meeting in front of them, five items, and it's a little bit different, their agenda, the first is a fence, second is a garage, the third is a gazebo, and the fourth is the Pilot Travel Center, needs a variance on some lighting, height of lighting poles and plantings, believe it or not, that are around the building. We have a 30-foot height limit on lighting, and they need about 33 feet to keep their, all of their lot lit, and then some plantings that I didn't, they need to be within 10 feet of the building of the foundation, and they need to have some that are 12 feet away from the foundation. So, pretty simple stuff, but I thought it was interesting they were on the agenda already, and then another fence to deal with. Depending questions, that's my report.
Anything for Councilman Smith?
Thanks, Marty. Solid Waste and Animal Adoption Center, Chase. So the golf outing that Mason was talking about, registration is at 6:30 to 8:00, they start at 8:00 a.m., and it launches from 12:00 or 12:30. And then on the solid waste board, since our last board meeting, the recycling center shipped 88.1 tons of recyclables with a value of $9,836.31. For the month of April 2017, county-owned landfill received 31,818.13 tons of waste in 22 and a half working days for a daily average of 1,414 tons per day. Fulton County accounted for 5,483 tons, the rest of Indiana contributed 26,333 tons. There was 1.3 tons of out-of-state trash collected, and the district's host fee for the month was $40,873.53. The county's host fee for the month of April was $13,167.34. So far, they've sold a total of 1,639 orange bags, of which 756 were purchased by city residents, and 853 were purchased by county residents, and so far I've collected $1,062 for the disposal of both items. And we ended up approving a new purchase for a roll-off dumpster from Jason Group at That's about it. We did get the hood painted on our tractor, there's a new old tractor that we decided to sell, we painted the hood and detailed it, looks really nice, so we're gonna try to sell that. Actually, we're gonna try to sell that to the counties.
Counties looking at it, what would have to be done to be able to do that, it might even be something, transfer, I think they first and foremost have to decide if they want it. Commissioner Randstad, who has a lot of experience in that area, says it's most of the time not a good idea to get into something like that, it's usually cheaper to buy new than it is to get something like that, it's in that much activity with it, they were gonna check on it. I might as well let everyone know that there was another issue that came up, and that was regarding the contract, we had quite a bit of discussion regarding the contract between Republic and the county, and how payment is made for trash distribution out there, and the district's host fee, how that's established, and the county's part of that, how that's established. This contract, the original contract was made in 1996, it's had four addendums since that time, and at least three different parties to deal with, started with Allied Waste Disposal, and today is Republic. I'm of the, Gil and I spoke at the county council meeting here a few weeks ago, that we need to go through this contract from top to bottom, it's quite lengthy. Councilman Heller and I are meeting on July the 11th to go through it, I've got several questions as to how the payouts are being made, and really, there's been no sit-down with anybody since Allied Waste to go through that contract. Like I said, we've had at least three different hands now who are responsible to the county for that contract, we need to make sure everybody's of the same understanding of how these monies are being paid, we may find some money there that we didn't know about. Anyway, we're doing some due diligence there, and that, like I said, will be done by July the 11th, and then the plan would be to sit down with the Republic and, you know, go through, here's what we interpret this to be, what's your interpretation, so make sure we're all on the same page. Anything question-wise for Chase? Gone through everything, you got three hats tonight. Are you speaking for Sarah, are you?
Well, she had asked me to, but maybe, why Amy is here, I'm not sure. Guess I don't remember, but I'd be happy to. Go ahead. Yes, I'm wearing multiple hats tonight.
Okay, for the Rochester Downtown Partnership, Shadet.
I'm actually, basically she really...
Who's a member of that board?
Yes, I am the vice president of that board, and basically really what she, I'm gonna bring the text up so I make sure I don't forget anything, but Sarah Reese was unable to be here this evening, who is the executive director, and she, a couple of things we've got going on, and Mason can speak to this as well, they've got a couple of projects they're looking at doing with some bikes and some benches, and we spoke about that at our last board meeting, and we're still trying to get that finalized and get that project hopefully moving forward soon, and looking at revenue and cost and all of that stuff. So it's kind of exciting, because it's actually hopefully gonna, again, it's that visual point in downtown, something people can physically touch, visibly see, and kind of stir that, like you talked about the couple with Juretti's. And then the other thing she wanted me to make sure I mentioned was the Living Local Festival, and this is the first year in many, many years that we have had a parade and on a Saturday, followed by a small festival. From the RDP's perspective, the festival accomplished exactly what we wanted it to, the goal was to bring in local, we call them foodies, but to bring in some local food vendors, local crafters that people may not know are around here. We were not targeting the food trucks, we did not target those folks intentionally, because we were trying to make it about the locals, like I said again, the ones that we don't know about, and we had two brand-new folks that are newer to the area and are getting ready, one of them being our new restaurant that will be opening hopefully in August, I believe, August, yeah. And the other one was a barbecue guy, I forget the name, just jumped right out of my head.
His name is Giorgiano's.
Giorgiano's, thank you, I said, it went right out as soon as I started to say it. And they're, they've been here about a year, but they typically will do like motorcycle festivals and things like that, but, oh my, the food was really good. And then, of course, Sally's was there, and Putz did a beer garden, so he was able to bring in, and there was actually a group of motorcycle group that came in, writers, and they went, ate lunch, and left, and we had a small string band there, did a really good job, three of them, and they played for a couple of hours, and it was really, it was just nice, it was a relaxing event, if I could say that for a minute.
And you got the sample bill fair for the Cuban restaurant.
Yes, and the, yeah, and I was gonna say, the Cuban restaurant was the one that they will be opening in August, but they sold out first.
At 12:30.
Yes, they were the first one to sell out of their food that day, so I think we've got some great things coming from them as far as a new restaurant coming in. And then, make sure I didn't miss anything, I think that was really all she wanted to... Oh, and the facade grants, we're gonna be making a change on our facade grants, before we've been doing a cutoff deadline, and in conversations with Community Foundation and some other mainstream programs, we are finding that it probably is better to make that a, basically a continuous grant process. So there's, you know, somebody can come in, apply for an awning or a small facade grant, and we're just gonna continue that as opposed to having cutoff deadlines, so that the work can just keep progressing, because obviously it's harder to get contractors, and some of that deadline stuff can be challenging, especially if you're having an awning made, and hitting, you know, make sure your vendors can get that stuff done, so my thinking.
Yes, and then Mason is working with IUK, we had the MOU that showed up to do that, IUK MBA students to do the leakage study and market analysis for us, and then today, we actually heard about potential partnership with Tourism, and then Chrissy from the Promotions Committee to receive 50/50 match to do some videos for not only downtown Rochester to promote, but also for Fulton County, so that is something that came in about 3 o'clock, so that is new, but we were waiting to hear that, so I called Chrissy about it to see, you know, what her thoughts were, so the opportunity to be able to create those videos to put on the Rochester Downtown Partnership's website, or Tourism website, or to put anywhere or to use, so that's potentially in the works, too.
Okay, any questions for Amy or Shadet? Okay, thank you, very much.
I think I can.
You're welcome.
Got it, more now.
We don't have any ADA concerns, any legal things to throw out, any?
I just wanna reiterate annually, as part of our agreement to serve the city attorney, I do attend the ADN Municipal Lawyers Association Conference, which I went to Thursday and Friday, interesting ideas, lots of cities and towns had issues with weeds and problem properties and chickens, so, happy to know that. But one of the issues that was cringing out of that is the idea of pursuing problem properties in litigation with more than one plaintiff, to get some economies of scale and also to force some leverage. For example, when we sue someone under the unsafe building, more than the city is the sole plaintiff, if we wanted to, there's no reason we couldn't bring a joint city-county litigation if there were also health code violations, and bring one plaintiff, kind of work together as a team on some, some I'd like to explore a little bit.
Does that add more credence to what you're doing, or more clout to the process?
It certainly adds more teeth to the process, because you have the ability to, in one lawsuit, you can cite someone for violating both city and county ordinances, and you kind of cast a broader, the media uses a tool for us, and a lot of things like that.
Anything to ask Andy, please.
Are you taking questions from the audience?
Well, we've got to move into our ordinance here.
And then after that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it, does it...
It's pertinent to city business, yes.
Pardon me?
It's pertinent to city business, yes, I thought you asked me a question.
Okay, okay. We move on down to the ordinances and resolutions, we've got one ordinance on the schedule tonight, it's ordinance 03-2017, illegal bicycles on city or protected property, and this originates with some issues we've been having all through town, Jeez Shots in the department had to deal with several issues regarding some specific groups of young folks who were riding their bicycles on private properties and doing some very dangerous things. Actually, I see a property owner sitting in the audience tonight, Mr. Betcher, owns the old Ruski's home house over on Knight Street that he's revamping, they're doing. Would you like to stand, Dan, and identify yourself and tell a little bit about what's happening over there in your property?
I'm Dan Betcher, I own that property there on Knight Street. I got a call one day that there was kids riding bikes and hopping off the back porch, it's under construction, and I didn't have it fenced off or anything, was gonna be doing some concrete work, and, but it's just a dangerous thing, and I, being out of town, you don't have any way of controlling it, and I asked for, I mean, you patrol as much as you can, but sometimes it's a little unsafe, and I don't know if it's up to the parents or who it's up to, but a little bit dangerous, and it could cause me a problem or the kids.
Andy, would you like to speak towards that, you had quite a bit of experience.
This has been an ongoing problem since it started getting warm, there for a while we were getting two or three calls a day with kids riding on business property, doing tricks on the courthouse steps while at 2:00 in the afternoon on a weekday. So we had a meeting, Mayor and I had a meeting with David Burkes just to talk about our options. We confiscated bikes and told the parents to come get them, and then we get accused of harassing their kids, so we, trust me, we have other, better things to do than worry about kids on bikes, but these are the things we're getting calls to.
Well, and we have had an incident where there was an accident, well, but construction was going on at Knight of Main, had a young man down there doing some jumps, hit his head, and had stitches out of the hospital, so I mean, it's, we're trying to be proactive on this, these businesses and private properties are not bicycle parks.
We have a bicycle park. We told the kids, their biggest complaint is that it's not good enough, and they want us to give it to them, they want us to do something about it, we've instructed them, hey, look, get your parents, go to the Parks Board meeting, come up with funding ideas, make it better, and to no avail, so I don't enjoy having to come up with an ordinance, because that's why every ordinance is created, because of one or two people.
And I guess that brings up that, Terry and I are talking about thinking about the future with bicycles, we are obviously bringing, or he is, with the nickel plate, bringing bicyclists downtown, if you put actual bike racks on a place that says no bicycles welcome, but then you have this other issue, that's kind of a conflict of...
It is, and they can have bicycles downtown, they just get rid of them on the sidewalks.
Yeah, so it says, yeah, looking at what that looks like, because there are folks that do, because they were, poor Lenny, they were using his, I saw them at 1:00 in the morning, or someone else saw them, told me that they saw them at 1:00 in the morning using that beautiful new stage as a ramp. I did not see that, neither did the police officers, I talked to Jim Officer Reason about it, but somebody had seen them at 1:00 in the morning using that, so it's that balance between, we want bicyclists who are actually responsible to be able to come down and use that, but you don't want these young folks who are choosing to misuse their bicycle.
We had a bicycle at 1:00 in the morning. So why are they bicycling at 1:00 in the morning?
That would be apparent, that question to the parents, I think, because I don't know either, but there were, I think, a group of five of them that were out at 1:00 in the morning using the stage as a ramp.
And somebody's gonna get hurt, it's just a matter of time. We had one homeowner, they were going off his diving board, his backyard, you know, it's just, you've got to have some...
Balance between folks who misuse it.
Right, that's the one. So that is, like the chief said, we met the other day and put together an ordinance or revised an ordinance, came up with a different bicycle ordinance for downtown, and it's ordinance 03-2017, and Councilman Hoodman, if you, I entertain a motion to have the first read ordinance 3-2017 in its entirety?
I move to read in its entirety.
Second, those in favor? Ordinance number, do you want to take that?
Ordinance number 03-2017, ordinance regarding bicycles in city or protected property, whereas the...
Whereas the common counsel of the City of Rochester has determined that certain portions of the city's ordinances regarding use of bicycles on certain city or protected property should be amended. Now therefore being ordained by the common counsel of the City of Rochester, the following sections of the municipal code of the City of Rochester be amended. Section ninety-eight point zero-one is hereby amended as follows, additions in bold. Definition, for the purpose of this section, protected property is defined as any business, church, organization, city property, or other property accessed by the public excluding parks. Section ninety-eight point zero-four is hereby amended as follows. Repeatedly driving through parking area, dangerous bicycle riding prohibited. A, it shall be a violation of the section for any person to drive a motor vehicle repeatedly through any parking area provided access to a protected property without transacting business. B, it shall be a violation of the section for any person to ride a bicycle on a protected property or private property in a manner other than for transportation, including stunts, tricks, performance riding, or any manner that presents increased danger, risk, or hazard to the rider or bystanders beyond normal bicycle transportation without the permission of the property owner.
Mr. Mayor, before you proceed to set a reading, a couple of things. I did not realize until I walked in today that you wouldn't be able to pass this ordinance today because you only have four members of the council here.
And?
So you have introduced it, but the, you have an ordinance that says if you pass it at the same meeting where it's introduced, you need a two-thirds majority, so you can't do that. And you also have an ordinance that says you can only do a second reading by title only if you have unanimous consent of two-thirds. So if you read it a second time, you actually have to read it in its entirety. So you might want to consider either tangling it, now you had first reading, tangling it to a third reading for future reading. Whether, you could do it at a special meeting and if only four of you show up for the next special meeting as long as it's noticed, you can pass it.
Yeah, I forgot, and also you have two-thirds of the-
So I'll look over at the table. Second reading.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Four to zero. The eleven, the budget meeting?
The eleven?
Yes.
Is the budget meeting?
You do it right now. So I will practice, I'll work on it.
Record yourself.
Yeah, we can do it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have not, yeah, I have not advertised it yet.
Have you advertised it?
I mean, is it, do we need to do it by, is there any?
No, not right now. We're okay. We could wait till the next meeting.
Good. So what's your, are we doing it on the eleven? We're gonna wait till our next?
We're gonna wait till the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir, you had something for the council?
Yes, my name is Paul Fleishman. Forgive me for not standing, I've got a medical condition.
No problem, Paul.
Prior to your election, the previous mayor, Smiley, and the city council, they appropriated thousands, well, actually tens of thousands of dollars to hire an engineering firm to do the storm sewer study. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that was triad, I believe, out of Indianapolis?
Yes.
Well, part of their study involved soil, I was here for the meetings, soil tests and surveying. Why are we doing it again?
That was, that was done at a different time. It was a different project. We're doing a portion of the storm sewer. We're not doing the whole city at this time. So we're, actually, we're going through and rechecking that section that we're going to do and make sure that all of our D's are crossed and our I's are dotted.
Well, I don't understand, what did we pay the other company for? They did, according to their report, exactly what you're doing now.
The company that we're using right now has gone through that report thoroughly and they have deemed it necessary to do these checks that they're doing right now. They have seen the Triad report.
I'm sorry?
They have seen the Triad report and gone through it thoroughly, but have deemed that there are certain areas they need to do some checking on and that's what they're doing.
Well, we paid Triad for something we didn't get, is that what you're telling me?
We paid Triad for a project that didn't get carried forward, yes.
Well, again, one of these two surveys was unnecessary.
I'm not, I'm not sure that. Like I said, the engineering firm we're dealing with has been through the Triad report and has utilized some of the information from-
What caused you to bring in another concern? Another engineering outfit?
Um-
I mean, the surveying was done, the soil tests were done, and we're doing it over again, that's my question. Not to subtract, not to turn on that. But what made you bring this outfit in?
Just my choice, my choice of engineering firms.
I'm sorry?
My choice of engineering firms. That was my decision.
To back up or to, to what, to try it?
To use the Donaghy folks to make the evaluations that we needed to make to break ground to go forth with the project. And we started with the Triad study. They took it apart and took a look at it and then picked out what they wanted to, what they thought was necessary to go through and move forward with the project.
Well, again, it begs the question, somebody that paid for not doing it down, in my estimation.
Well, we have full confidence in the folks that we're dealing with now. I don't, not saying the Triad folks didn't do a good job, just saying that's not the engineering firm that I chose when we went down the road for this project, but I did take their information and shared it with the engineering firm that we are dealing with. And they came through with, this is the process we need to take to move forward.
Okay, well, it's not okay, but in your, in your local call, when you were talking about the storm sewer utility, I was here that night when they didn't even know we had one, council that is. Burns Bank brought it up, nobody knew anything about it. But now, now we find out it's a ten-year-old deal, right?
It's longer than that.
Okay, but it hasn't been enforced in ten years.
There were never any rates established, the-
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, the ordinance to establish a utility was put into place in two thousand and one.
But nothing was done.
Two thousand and one. But then the next steps to move forward were never done.
Well, this is probably for the city attorney more than, I mean, that thing has died ten years ago. If you're gonna, if you're gonna impose fees, I think you will probably need to do, have more meetings, publish it before you enforce any monetary, you see, right?
I see what you're saying, I mean-
It means it died of old age.
Well-
You need to bring it up again. Again, I think.
I don't know, the decision to make a utility dies of old age, it's on the books.
But it was never enforced.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
No, not without further research.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't-
Well, I think he said he'd have to research that, Paul.
Okay.
I mean, are you asking me to research that question?
Please.
Okay. Yeah.
And then at the next council meeting, we can bring, visit this again?
We can, we can certainly hear a report from him on that, yeah.
Yeah. Because something that old, it hasn't been enforced, I mean, you have to go back and have hearings again, in my estimation. And I think that's what council will find out.
Yeah, and there would be, there would be public hearings at establishment of the rates. That's part of the process.
No, prior to establishing the rates.
Yes, but I'm not sure that an ordinance to establish utility ever dies. I don't know, that's something we're gonna have to take a look at.
Okay, and then we put that on agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, those in favor, we're in adjournment.